Started.
Hey, sorry, I was just meeting with Know Your Reps students who are volunteering. It's an organization that does like candidate profiles and stuff, nonpartisan groups. So a bunch of young people are high school Ledlow and Ward students. So I was just meeting with them. They were just interviewing me and talking. It's nice. So, okay, I'm going to officially call the meeting to order. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for our first item, the minutes to consider, can I get a motion to consider an act upon the minutes?
So moved.
October four, twenty twenty-one.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion on this item?
No.
Okay. Go for me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four is resignations for information purposes only. John Branley, a Burr Street, whose term was to go till eleven twenty-two. He resigned on October fifth, twenty twenty-one, and I just would like to thank him for his service on the Fire Commission. And also resignation from Mitch Fuchs from Melody Lane. He resigned on October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Actually, Mitch Fuchs and I go way back. We used to, he was part of a group I called, started back in the nineties called One Voice for Education. And he has served in very numerous boards. And he was actually on Transit Authority for a very long time. So I really would like to thank him for, for his service to, to our community and to our town. I'll just open it up if anybody would like to comment.
I'd like to, first of all, thank both gentlemen for their, their work to date. Much appreciated. And Brenda, as you, I've known Mitch for quite some time. I remember back when he was the head of the Democratic Party in town and got to know him as I first got involved in politics. And thank him for his long and distinguished service to the town as well.
And I will echo the sentiment, just to thank both gentlemen for their service and to wish John well on his move.
Okay. Thank you. We also have item number C, I'm sorry, is Beverly Veneer, who will be resigning from the Racial Equity Justice Task Force. Her term is to expire, I mean, her resignation, I'm sorry, date was October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And I want to thank Beverly, but we're going to be appointing her in our next item. So does anyone have any comments there?
Well, yes, to thank, because she's been such a strong voice on the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. But as that work for the task force is winding down, once we turn in a blueprint, she was excited at the upcoming opportunity, which we'll talk about, but certainly to thank her for lending her voice to the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. And I know she'll continue to be a voice as a community member. So thanks in that capacity, Bev.
And I think it's, I think it's appropriate to say thank you and congratulations at the same time. So wish you the best in your new role as well.
Thank you so very much, Tom Flynn and Nancy.
Could you hit me? Yes.
Oh, good.
So item number five is I will ask for a motion to hear and consider an act upon the following appointment, the Fire Commission of Beverly Veneer to fill a vacancy for John Branley. This term runs from two eleven twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And seconded.
Thank you, and welcome, Beverly. Nice to, nice to see you. And thank you for stepping up to serve on, on this commission. It's, it's a really great commission. Yes, I see you. It's a great commission, and I think you're going to enjoy being on it. Obviously, our fire department is awesome. And so I appreciate your service and willingness to serve on this commission. I'm going to open it up. I'm going to let the chief would like to say something.
I first want to say to the chief before you continue, I want to commend you guys on how you handled the fire on Turney, on the corner of Old Post, because I'm on Old Post. And it was an evening to remember. I mean, the technology that you guys used in that, I mean, containing the fire when it was so close to two homes, and actually four, right? The former select man and the other, I forgot the address, but it's directly across the street from me. And of course, the two homes and the garages next to each other are butting each other essentially on Turney. So we, obviously, you saw that there was a scene. You had an audience, and we were all talking about how great you guys handled it, how impressed we were. So thanks again. That was, yeah.
Well, thank, well, thank you for that. And thank you, Madam First Select Woman, for the opportunity to speak briefly. I want to welcome Beverly to the Fire Commission. It's wonderful that you have some firsthand experience to witness the work that the men and women of the Fairfield Fire Department perform and do every day for the citizens. We welcome you as part of our family. We would like to, you know, set up a time and the deputy will reach out to you, who is also on the call, give you a tour around the station and have a chance to talk with us and members of the department in person. And more importantly, your experience and certain, your service on the Racial Equity Task Force. You bring that to the commission, and we are in the process of recruitment for an entry level test. And one of the missions and goals of the Fairfield Fire Department is to improve diversity in the department. And this is a Herculean task, and we need everyone to pull in the same direction to make that a reality. We become a better department if we represent the community that we serve. Now, to lead where it has been a longstanding goal of ours, to continue to seek diversity in our ranks. So we welcome your participation, your voice, and your presence in those discussions. So thank you very much for joining our family.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so much again for having me.
And I'll open it up to the board for any comments.
If, if I may, I want to welcome Beverly. I'm so thrilled to be able to nominate and support this nomination. You are a strong, smart black woman. You bring incredible insight and talent to this board, or you will, because I know that's what you brought to the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. And, you know, I'm thrilled to hear what the chief just said, and that makes me really proud. And just wish you lots of good luck and just really glad that you're going to be able to lend your strong voice to such a strong, important commission in town. So thanks, Bev.
Thank you again. Thank you again.
Hey, Beverly, just good luck again, and don't mess it up. I'm kidding.
I know where you are, Tom. I'll find you.
Not a woman who suffers fools, Tom, so.
I don't know what you're saying, Nancy.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of this appointment?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. And thank you again for stepping up. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, chief. Take care, Beverly.
Beverly, I will tell you what I tell all people who are being appointed, especially at the beginning of a meeting. You're welcome to stay, and you're free to leave.
I'm going to pick up my fifteen-year-old, then I have to resume work. Thank you again.
Take care.
I just do want to announce, Jennifer just came in and told me that Fair TV is having trouble broadcasting us live. I don't know, it's having some kind of glitch downstairs. It is being recorded, though, so if they can't get us back up live, people will be able to watch it.
Okay.
Okay, so our next item is item number six. This requires Board of Finance and our TAM approval to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating two million nine hundred ninety-one six oh seven for the cost of Roger Ledlow Middle School roof replacement project and for design services for partial roof replacement projects at Sherman and McKinley Elementary Schools and assuring the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Good night.
Okay, and Angeles Papa George is here to present this side.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for hearing us today. So this is the Roger Ledlow Middle School Roof Replacement Project. It was scheduled in our waterfall for next year, and McKinley Elementary School was scheduled for this year. Due to concerns at Roger Ledlow Middle School, we have swapped those two projects. So you, that's why you have the Roger Ledlow Middle School roof for you today. In addition, you have, you're seeing this before the Capitol Summit and before the waterfall. Due to restraints with supplies and especially roofing materials and insulation is the big driver at this. We feel that if we cannot get this project out to bid just after the holidays and right around New Year's, we will not be able to get this roof done over the summer break that we have. As you guys know, we have a small break, and we try to get as much done as possible. In that, additionally, you'll see a new approach that you'll see on this request is the funding for the McKinley and the Sherman roof design work. So our thought, our thought process for that is that we would like to start, instead of bidding our roofs out in the early spring and being kind of late to the game for summer work, we'd like to be able to get ahead of the design work and get them out sooner for bid work so that we're not always behind, we feel we're behind the eight ball when it comes to bidding our roofs, and we're probably paying more of a premium for roofs. Whereas if we can speed the process up and get them out sooner, then we can actually hopefully see better savings and deals on roof work. This is the roof at Roger Ledlow Middle School. Like I said, it's replacing the existing roof, which was the original roof to the building. Approximately nine years ago, it had around a thirty thousand dollar renovation on the auditorium. But other than that, this is original to the building. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Yeah, I'll have some questions. Nancy, do you want to go first?
I spoke to Christine at length today, so I actually don't have questions, but I am sure we'll gain some value and insight from yours, so please. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Madam First Select Woman and Nancy as well. Angeles, tell me, did the roof fail? Why, why did this get moved up in the, in the projections?
It got moved up by one year, and it's just due to failing and leaks throughout the last year. It's, it's been, it's become a constant fight to keep the building dry. At this point, we've done numerous repairs. We, I feel every time it rains, we're out there doing repairs, looking at possible potential other areas that it could leak. As part of the report, you'll see in the book that there's some pictures of some seams and just wear, sun wear over time. It didn't, it held up very well, but it's been at the end of its life. And unfortunately, we don't feel at this point it could make it that extra year.
What, how many years, again, remind me if you don't mind?
Yep, so the building, let me look. Construction was in two thousand and three, and the warranty expired in twenty eighteen. So it's made it a couple of years beyond the warranty time from a two thousand and three building. We would be, we would be looking to receive a twenty-year, no, no cost, no labor, no material warranty on the new bill, on the new roof.
And was that you said, hey, we swapped, and you went pretty quickly. You swapped one for one. Which one did you swap out?
McKinley was scheduled for this coming summer.
The same price point?
No, this one is slightly higher because it's obviously a larger, more square footage.
What's slightly, if you don't mind?
You know, I unfortunately do not have the McKinley roof price, but I can get it for you.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. The other thing that, when I was reading this, the thing that dawned on me as I, as I kind of went through this was the very specific nature of the amount. And then to say that we're going out to bid, right? And you're, and you're asking for an appropriation here of two million nine ninety-one six oh seven, which is this one plus the two other ones. Talk, talk the two specs or whatever, the design work.
So the.
Yeah.
The two million nine sixty-seven two oh seven for the Roger Ledlow Middle School roof was based on a square footage cost by working with competitive roofing contractors and roofing contracts that are contractors that have done many roofs for us already. So they gave us a square foot price, and then we were able to calculate out best pricing for that. The design work for Roger Sherman and McKinley, the twenty-four four, that was based on getting pricing from the design architect company. What we did, when we went out for roof design work for Roger Ledlow Middle School and Mill Hill last year, I'm sorry, McKinley last year, what we did is we waterfall four roofs in on that bid so that we had a contractor and an architect company locked in to do those. So that's how we can provide pretty basic pricing, because we already have the contractor based on bidding to do the design work. So it's not like we're shopping for the best. We already went out to bid for it.
So I get in on the design work. That's just, your little commentary there was just basically you're locked in for the design work, right?
Yes, correct.
All right, so the, the cost per square foot number, when did you get that, that number?
We got that just recently, based on current rates, excuse me, based on current rates. Within the last three months.
Yeah, see, what I'm, my concern here, quite frankly, is what I'm, because I do this a lot with my clients in my professional career, is all these rates of materials and building supplies have all gone up dramatically in the last number of months due to the supply chain issue. Now, you referenced the supply chain issue in wanting to get this approved more quickly, right? You said particularly, I think you said insulation was, was a particular concern.
Yes.
But have you factored that into the price? And, and I'm concerned because the specificity of the price here makes it seem as though we're further along than we actually are. So give me some thoughts there.
No, we, we actually did. We, we reached out to the design companies. We've spoken with roofing contractors, and we, we realized the shortfall in the supply-demand has driven prices up dramatically. So we did counter, we did include that in our numbers when we were looking at, I'm sorry.
Okay, you just told me two different things, though, right? You told me that the price point that you got was several months back. And now you're telling me that you factored it into the price point. How did you factor that into, how did you factor it in escalator to the price point? If you got it several months ago.
So.
When nobody knew what was going on.
Four months ago is when the driver was at the highest. We're actually seeing some of our prices come down now. So that's why we're using that month, that price from several months ago still. We, we anticipate pricing will actually reduce before we go out the bid, but we didn't want to take that chance. So we kept the high escalator in there.
Okay, so you think that, you, you're not coming back to us in six months and saying we're under?
I have no intention of coming back to you and saying we're under, we need more money.
Let me, let me ask. Yeah, go ahead.
We looked at price points, we looked at past, we looked at what we believe future is. We worked with engineers to see what we felt future pricing is, and that's where we landed with our square footage numbers.
Okay, the other thing that's, I know, I want to hesitate to say concerning me, but it's, I'm intrigued by it is you've gone out, you've got this, and you're asking for the bonding resolution immediately. We have a building committee yet, and we haven't selected the building committee yet. Now, that's supposed to be today. Now, I don't think that's a typical protocol that we follow when we do this. I, I might be wrong, but I, I seem to recall we would empanel first and then go out and do the bonding after. Am I wrong on that? Maybe Mr. Baldwin can refresh my memory. It's been a while.
I, maybe Mr. Baldwin can weigh in on that, because I, I'm not familiar with that. I do know the last year when we did a roof, we did a Burr's roof last summer. And to my recollection, and I could be wrong, I thought we did on the same night the bonding, the funding approval and the assigned to the standing, because we're not going out and soliciting a building committee. We're requesting that the first select woman assign it to the standing building committee.
Right, no, that part I get, which makes total sense. I'm just wondering if we're hamstringing them or if they've been involved in this process at all to weigh in, or if they're going to look at this and say, we, we can't do it for this price or what have you. I just want to.
This is Attorney Baldwin. I, I have to confess that I don't have the institutional knowledge, other than what Mr. Papa George has described. It doesn't seem untoward to me to do it this way, but I, I can't say that I know for sure how it's been done in the past with other building committees.
Okay, is this being done this way? Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Is this being done this way, Angeles, because you're trying to, to fast run this? Is that, is that the bottom line here?
It's, the only thing that we're trying to fast run, as you said, is just because we are ahead of the Capitol Summit and planning. Other than that, I believe we are on a normal roll as far as approval process.
I guess what I'm saying is should we be approving the charge in the commission? Have them take a look at what you've done and come back and say, yeah, this is the right amount? What I mean by putting it all in one agenda is, are you trying to, to fast run it or front run it? Because you're concerned that it's going to take too much time if we don't. And I, and I see that the chairwoman of the Board of Education has, wants to be recognized. It's not for me to do that, but I just want to acknowledge.
Madam First Select Woman, do you mind if I jump in? I'm going to take that as a no right now.
Yeah, go for it.
From, just from past experience, usually these come all together, the bonding request, the charge, the building committee. The school district does, does the budget for it to move it forward. The building committee works with the budget that's put forward from the school district for these projects.
The budget, yeah, but the bonding requests, again, forgive me, I just don't recall.
Bonding requests also.
Okay. What is, so the Board of Ed is approved, I'm assuming, based on it's here. You guys approved this change in your request protocol and to move this forward a year and push the other one, push McKinley back?
We did. We approved this back in September, just, Angeles shared the concerns, just in terms of the supply chain. We didn't want to put this, potentially run the risk of putting it off two summers. Tommy may recall that we had a failing roof at Osborne Hill.
Yeah.
That, you know, was on its last leg. We were doing repairs, and then June, going into summer, it just needed to be replaced. And that had a fine in the operating budget, so trying to avoid that. We thought the Capitol Planning Summit, when we approved this, was going to be back in September. So the timing sort of got shifted around it a little bit. It is a little bit earlier by a month than when the Board of Ed would move it forward. We'd usually approve our capital projects end of November, beginning of December. But, you know, we don't want to run the risk of this not getting done next summer.
Well, and I certainly understand with the supply chain stuff and all that. Quest, quick question, how bad is McKinley? Are, are we creating an issue over there by putting that off, or are we okay there, Angeles or Christine?
We believe we are okay there. We have not had half as, nearly as many concerns as we do at Roger Ledlow at this point.
All right, if you could get me that number and we can know what the switch at is, and this is what's going to be reflected in what you're putting forward for the capital plan for the next year?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't mean to cut you off, Christine. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I had a little technical difficulty. Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yes.
Are there any additional questions on this item?
None for me, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay. All right, so item number eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To hear and, can I get a motion to approve, to hear and consider and approve a charge for the Roger Ledlow Middle School roof building committee?
Yeah, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, open the discussion. Angeles, again, is on, and our chairwoman of the Board of Ed. Is there any questions from the body?
I have one comment on this, given what Mr. Papa George, I'm going to hold him to this. He had said that they had used a high dollar amount for the Roger Ledlow. They, they used a higher estimate based on what was happening a few months ago, and saying that they expect to beat that estimate. So I just want to make sure it's reflected here in the building committee, which I, I know is the standing building committee. They're small projects, that we make sure that they do this, they don't expand the scope of the project with additional funding here, right? So if they can get this done for less, I want to make sure that those funds are returned to the town, given the commentary here.
Absolutely, and as you can see, this is, we're calling Roger Ledlow Middle School as a full roof replacement. So there really is no room for expansion of this project.
Exactly, I, I just want to make sure, because I've seen things in the past.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, all right, so seeing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine. Can I get a motion to hear and consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the First Select Woman? Resolve that the special project standing building committee shall serve as the Roger Ledlow Middle School Roof Building Committee for the purpose of performing roof replacements at Roger Ledlow Middle School.
Yeah, so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board for questions.
The only question I would have is, it's been a while since I've seen the roster, so can we make sure we get a list of the, the current roster of the special project standing committee place?
Sure.
Yeah, and I, presuming they've all agreed to serve again and want to take on the, the work.
Exactly. And I'm good and I'm glad to hand it over to them.
Same, same.
Okay, is that all for, from the board?
Yes, for me.
Okay, very good. So all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Just going to note this now, the special projects.
Madam First Select Woman, I do have one follow-up question for Mr. Papa George, if you might.
Go ahead.
So Angeles, the, the original, I guess, the original roof was supposed to last or was warranted for fifteen years? Is that correct?
Yes, twenty eighteen.
Two items there. Number one, what are we typically getting out of roofs? Because now it sounds like we're getting eighteen years.
Yeah, typically, we're getting about that. So with this roof, we will look to get a twenty-year warranty on it. With the new materials out there, we're, we're seeing a little bit longer of timeframes on them.
Yeah, the only concern I have is when we originally did these items, as I recall, we bonded them for twenty years, assuming we would get twenty years, which, and, and, you know, our policies are we're supposed to bond them for the length of time, the useful life, so that we're not paying for them after they're out of service. So it's a little disconcerting to hear that we're only eighteen years in on something that I presume, because this was done, this was done prior to my involvement, I believe. I'm a little concerned that we didn't get the full twenty years, and we're, we're going to be paying for this roof, the existing roof, for another couple of years when we put on a new roof. So I think it's very important that we get this set appropriately moving forward.
Absolutely, so I believe we would request for this roof to be a twenty-year bond with a twenty-year warranty for materials and labor at zero cost.
If that doesn't come about somehow with the labor and the materials cost, I'd like to know about that, because then I think before we go out and bond, I think we need to actually make sure that, that we're in alignment there.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. All right. All right, our next item is item number 10. To hear and consider an act upon a resolution approving the transfer, I'm sorry, a fiscal year 2020 and 2021 revenue surplus. Whereas the town of Fairfield is projected to end the 2020-21 fiscal year with 9.3 million operating fund surplus. The surplus, and whereas 3 million of the surplus amount is related to actual expenditures that were less than the amount of expenditures but budgeted, spending surplus. And whereas on October 5th, 2021, the Board of Finance unanimously approved the utilization of 1.322 of the spending surplus to fund the balance of the fiscal year 2019-2020 actuarially determined employer contribution, ADEC, and to other post-employment benefit, OPEP, funds. And whereas the remaining spending surplus is expected to be deposited into the town's fund balance. And whereas 6.3 million of the surplus amount is related to actual revenues receipts that exceeded the amount of the budgeted revenue surplus. And whereas the town continues to be confronted with the impact of the fill pile contamination and related costs, which are projected to greatly exceed the amount of the revenue surplus. And resolve that the town hereby authorizes, approves and directs the following transfers as of June 30th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it. I did want to add.
So.
For discussion.
So let me.
For clarification.
We have a motion and a second. I did want to share some information before I opened it up to the board.
Okay.
Regarding this item.
Okay.
So I've got some information I want to share. I just want to start off by saying that when this revenue, so when this surplus happened several, back in early October, typically this is expense revenue. And, I mean, yes, expense revenue, and this is new to me. I have, I guess we really haven't seen this level of surplus. And it was explained to me through our CFO and our town attorney that the other revenue was, the other surplus was revenue generated. It needs to actually be added to our budget. So instead of typical transfers, the Board of Finance typically just does, that's their function, this was a little different. And so the town attorney did some investigative work on this and realized that this was actually adding to our budget, which would meet, which he believed in his professional opinion, that all the bodies had to then vote to accept it and what we were going to do with it. So at that time, I had thought it was just transfer from the Board of Finance and learned late that day before the Board of Finance meeting about this technicality, so to speak. And I gave a presentation that night, and I will just share some information with both of you and any of our community who may be listening. So the town has identified over 50 sites within Fairfield as Julian sites and where our Julian fill was used in our various projects throughout our town. My administration has been working over the last two years to clean up this environmental mess and associated public corruption. And I've been updating our residents and elected officials throughout this process. And I just want to note that 25 of my newsletters have included information regarding fill pile. We all know there was a major criminal cases pending against a number of our former employees of the previous administration. And meanwhile, our town attorney does continue to work on litigation efforts to recoup some of the losses against third parties. And to recap, it took almost a year to negotiate the consent order with DEEP. Once we had that, it had enabled us to start remediating many of the Julian sites. And to date, the town has spent 2.9 million in legal and remediation fees. And I know that the cost ranges that I shared with the Board of Finance that night are significant, but many of these are estimates, depending largely on more testing, which also costs money. The fill pile remediation and future use is currently in negotiation with the Department of Environmental and Energy Protection. And current estimates of the cost to cap and close that site is in the range, is going to be in the range of between four and eight million. The Department of Environmental Protection has also agreed, has to agree to a remedy. And then we can have a public hearing on the public, on the fill pile itself. Our largest issue though now is our Penfield Pavilion. Now, we've all known that under the building was the largest site for the disposal of the Julian fill, all of which was contaminated. And we don't know yet the extent of the contamination content until further testing is conducted beneath the building and the parking lot. We do know though that there are PCBs there, but where there's more testing required. The cost to remove and dispose of the contaminated fill is looking to be in the range of 2.5 to 5 million. And as an aside, compounding the contamination problem the town faces, as early as April 2016, the previous administration also was advised that the pavilion was being built, rebuilt, in violation of a number of FEMA regulations. Rather than stop that construction and correct those violations, the previous administration went ahead and challenged FEMA while continuing construction. The town hired outside consultants to argue the previous administration's position, and all of these arguments were found unpersuasive by FEMA, leading to the complete denial and the final denial of the 4 million grants the town was supposed to be awarded. Additionally, in light of the appeal denial, the town now has a building built in violation of a number of FEMA regulations. And my administration is in negotiations with FEMA to consider how to correct these violations. Current estimates to correct them are, can be anywhere between five to eight million, depending on what we will ultimately end up doing with this building. And that is a conversation that I'm going to have to engage our community in. Once I can put together some, I would like two or three feasible options, right, that have a little bit more concrete information, then I want to go out to the community and share it and get feedback. I want to hear what our community wants us to do as well. As I briefly mentioned, there is Julian fill underneath the Penfield parking lot. Additional testing is still required there. Current estimates to remediate that are between three and five million, depending on what those tests show. A number of our ancillary sites, which are still under investigation or remediation, are currently estimated to be cost, will cost an additional three to four million to effectively remediate. I want to reiterate that anything under a consent order is required by law that we clean it. On the positive side though, we have already completed the remediation of 25 sites in our town, and our LEP is in the process of filing the appropriate document with various regulatory agencies. Our remediation continues and we will provide updates as they come available. We expect a number of additional ancillary sites to be remediated by the end of the winter. While it would have been my preference for our town to use the remaining 6 million in revenue surplus for many other things, I felt it was important to recommend the surplus be set aside for the town's fill pile fund towards the mounting costs of remediation. Contamination costs I presented are estimates based on preliminary evaluations by environmental consultants. Even at the low end of the range of costs, the numbers are high and will far exceed the 6 million surplus that I am proposing we set aside for the fill pile fund. And I just felt it would be irresponsible not to recommend that these funds be set aside for this purpose. We did put a million aside in the ARPA funds toward the fill pile remediation, and we are waiting for another million coming from the state in bonding. To date, I mentioned before, we are up at 2.9 in testing and remediation and legal fees. Now, I know some, some people have said, why didn't we put more money in the ARPA for the remediation and all of these items? Because these are shovel-ready projects that I put on the ARPA list. We are still in negotiation, and sometimes these negotiations with these regulatory agencies can take a long time. And you don't really know exactly when it's going to end up and where it's going to end up. And there are deadlines associated with the ARPA money. And I didn't want to risk losing any of that ARPA money because of deadline meeting, not meeting deadlines for projects. So my goal has been all along to be proactive, because I knew these bills were coming due. I mean, I've been talking about this for the last two years. And so I will now open it up for any questions or comments on the side.
Yes, thank you for that, and I appreciate, as I know, many of our residents do, that thorough debrief of where we're at and an overview. And I also appreciate that it's been in your newsletter a number of times, 25 times. It's great. It would be great too to continually, at this level, at the board level, to get these kinds of updates, because they're very helpful for us, you know, and I won't speak for Tom, but for me, when constituents call, that kind of information that you've just shared is very helpful at this table. So I hope that we'll get these kinds of updates as we move forward and hear from Mr. Brummer as he's talking to DEEP. It's obviously of paramount importance to this community, and I know it's something we all take incredibly seriously. And this does have my support. In earlier communications with the attorney and with Jared Schmidt, we talked about just adding a clarifying line to the final paragraph, whereas, just identifying where that 6 million goes. And I think it would be helpful, certainly it will be noted in the minutes, but if it would be possible just to add a line stating that it's going into this fill pile surplus fund, it would be, I think, a good clarifying point.
Hey, Nancy, can I ask a question on that?
Yes, I just wanted to just look, I'm sorry, Tom, at the end, I don't know if this works, Attorney Baldwin, but the last, the last where it says resolved, or would we do it before, but would we say resolve that the town hereby authorize, approves and directs the following transfers?
I don't know that it's necessary.
As of June 30th, 2021, to the fill pile fund?
I don't know that, I don't know that it's even necessary, because if you look, I want to ask this question, this goes directly to that. Jared, down at the bottom, you have transfers out, CNR remediation account. Is that a very specific account set up related to the fill pile? Is that a new account in our general ledger that's set up specifically for these type items?
It is, it is not a new account, it exists now. And it is for fill pile remediation, yes, you're correct.
Right, so we've already, so by designate, I want to add that language, that's fine, but we've already, we're designating it to a specific account that's specifically set up for that specific item. So there's no ambiguity as to where these accounts are, these amounts are to be spent. Is that fair to say?
Attorney Baldwin? Do you think?
Yes, hi, Attorney Baldwin here. I agree with the proposition that it is not necessary, but there's no harm in doing it, but it's not, not required in any way for any reason.
So I have no objection to it. Yeah.
Sorry, Nancy.
Yeah, I was looped into a communication, I was looped into a communication, asking for clarification, and I think if it offers people that extra level of clarity, if there is no harm, no foul, I say why not, but.
Sure. So Attorney, no, I'm fine, that's fine, Nancy. Attorney Baldwin, what would you recommend we do? Where?
I'm trying to pull up that part of the resolution. It's in the backup, right?
Right, well, it's on the agenda. It's on the agenda 10, and so it's got a lot of whereas's.
You want me to, can I make a suggestion? The language?
Oh, okay, now I have it. Yeah, please.
Do you want me to make a suggestion, Jim?
Yeah, please, go for it, Jared.
So in the, in the resolved sentence, I would suggest that we say resolved, that the town hereby authorizes, approves and directs the, as it is now. And then after the, add transfer of the fiscal year 2020-2021 revenue surplus to the fill pile remediation account as follows.
I think that's, that's perfect.
Nancy, does that do what you want it to do?
Yes, it's, it's a clarifying sentence, I appreciate it.
So why don't you make the motion just adopting Jared's language and I'll second it for you?
Okay, so I move to adopt the language as stated by Jared Schmidt just now. That's my motion.
And I second that.
Okay. There's a range discussion on the amendment.
Nothing further.
Yeah.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Hey, I've got a couple of questions, if I might, Nancy, I don't want to cut you off, so please feel free.
Let's go back, so we're back to the, the motion as amended, and I'll open it up to the board for questions.
Thanks. Nancy, I don't want to cut you off, so if you have anything you want to say, please go ahead and I'll come after.
You are not cutting me off.
Okay. Jared, in that same, that same account, what does that CNR stand for? Just because that, that was a little confusing to me.
That stands for capital non-recurring.
So it's capital non-recurring, which this really isn't, but it's, you put it in capital non-recurring remediation account, and that's specific to the fill pile. Fine.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Up above in the resolution, I noted when the First Select Woman read it later, whereas the town of Fairfield is projected to end the 2021, that's, that's no longer projected, we're ending it with that, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so I think just to lose the ambiguity, I think we should amend is to say, you know, whereas the town of Fairfield is ending the 2021, you know, the 2020 to 2021 fiscal year with a $9.3 million operating fund surplus. I think we should just flat out state it. So I'll make a motion to amend this to say, whereas the town of Fairfield is ending the 2020-2021 fiscal year with a $9.3 million operating fund surplus. So that's my motion.
I'll, I'll second it for discussion. I, can you explain?
Yeah, so projected, this, this language means that it's projected, meaning it's not final. At this point, that should be the final number for the year, so I just want to get rid of the ambiguity. June is over, the audit is just about complete or so, and if this is the final number that we're doing transfers on, then we should make it the final number. If it's not the final number, then it's projected.
Sorry to not know this. Is this typical to the process in terms of what we state? This specific language?
In past years, but in past years, I would say, based on my experience, yes. To Madam First Select Woman's original point, typically our surplus is not 9.3 million, it's, it could be more in the range of a couple million to three, maybe four million, as I recall, but it's, it hasn't been this high. It's obviously this high due to revenues coming in much higher than thought by $6 million or so, given COVID. They were, we were much more conservative, we came in better. So it's really the dollar amount that's different, Nancy, but typically at this point, you know how the fiscal year ended.
I just don't know enough to be able to make an informed vote based on history, so this is just new to me.
Got it.
So in that regard, I wouldn't necessarily support it, but not because it doesn't ultimately, it wouldn't be something I would support, I just. not because it doesn't ultimately, it wouldn't be something I would support. I just don't, I would just need to do more homework.
Um, could uh, could uh, Attorney Baldwin, you weigh in, um, or Jared?
Yeah, this is Attorney Baldwin. I I just wanna point out, not to split hairs, but I guess that's what in effect, what we're doing here, um, it's not exactly nine point three million dollars either, I'm sure. I'm sure there's uh, some uh, additional dollars and thirty-three cents or something added to that number, and perhaps that's a good reason to keep the language projected and keep it uh, keep it less exact, if you will. Um, because I'm I'm sure Jared can weigh in, but I don't know if that's the the precise number.
So so the the exact amount that we have right now, which also isn't exact, exact, it's rounded to the nearest thousand, is nine uh, nine million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand.
So what happens to this other amount? The rest of it just flows through the fund balance?
Exactly, whatever. And that, you know, that will get to the other whereas in there.
Yeah, what I don't want is a surprise to hear that this is, you know, we're doing nine point three and in two weeks it's nine point six, right?
That's right. I mean,
That's why I'm going for the more.
Barring any, barring any uh, any kind of mistake, this is, this is the number, yeah.
So I would ra- you know, my draw there's is always to go uh, more exact at this point. Um, that's fine if you don't want to. Uh, I'll just vote, you know, my motion and you guys can vote it down. That's totally fine.
So um, just to be clear for myself, Jared, do you think we should keep it the way it is?
If you uh, if, I mean, if you wanna give a little bit of wiggle room, then then leave it as projected. And uh, it is, it's not going, it's not going to vary a lot from.
Or you say approximate. Or I put in my motion approximate.
Okay.
So I'll amend my motion and add the word approximate for nine point three million.
Would that be acceptable, Jared and Attorney Baldwin?
Yeah, that's fine, fine, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
I need a second. To my amendment, to my amendment.
I'll I'll I guess I'll I'll second. Yeah, I'm happy to second it again. I just
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you. I don't need, yeah, I don't need to discuss it anymore to be honest.
Right, so we've discussed it. We do, it doesn't really, um, you know, hamper this issue in any way. It's it's really the same. It's just saying a pro- uh, estimate. Um, so I I'll 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 support it. As I've been advised by the town attorney and our CFO that it
This is Attorney Baldwin again. Maybe it's uh, best if you withdraw your original motion or rescind it. Uh, would, cuz it didn't you, you, that was already seconded. It might be smoother from a process standpoint that you do that, Tom, and then then make this motion instead.
Tom, can you hear him?
My apologies. Uh, I had you on mute cuz my dog was going nuts. Um, I will rescind my motion. Nancy, do you need to, Jim, does Nancy need to re- second my rescind or no?
Or or you could do it that way, or or you can just uh, vote it down and then you can offer a new motion, whatever it takes, but the
I'll resc- I'll rescind my motion. Nancy, can you second that?
And I'll I'll second it for whatever we need to, I second it.
Alright, so I'll, I will repropose my motion for the uh, line to read, whereas the town of Fairfield has a surplus there to twenty twenty-one, or ending the fiscal year twenty to twenty twenty-one with an approximate nine point three million dollar operating fund balance. The surplus.
Alright, so I'll second that.
Thank you, Nancy. So there, there's the amendment.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
There isn't. I feel comfortable supporting this, given the conversation we've just had. It's, I think it's not consequential. It doesn't seem so.
Alright, so no further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we back to the main item as amended? Is there any further discussion on the main item as amended?
So just um, i- it's so that I understand the projections, the cost projections that were given are based on the internal estimates that have been developed based on the options that are being explored by the administration uh, to resolve all of these fill pile-related sites across the town, which could take several years because it's not just remediating them, but it's also negotiating with the various state agencies the best and most efficient way to remediate them. Is that right, Mrs. Kupchak?
Well, um, so, alright, so again, we are gonna continue remediating.
Yes.
Uh, over through the winter and as we get sign-offs um, on our specific, you know, fifty sites, we get right on it. Um, obviously, we would be using this funding, um, but
Right.
The two items that are a bit more tricky uh, are are the actual fill pile. Cuz we 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 are still in negotiations with that. And then I wanna also talk to the community a bit. I mean, we can't, you know, what whatever the regulating agency ends up negotiating with us, we're gonna do.
Right.
But then I think there's a broader discussion about that actual site. That I wanna bring the community engaged in that. And then we have the remediation of under Penfield and the parking lot. Again,
Right.
additional testing, so on and so forth. We'll be in negotiations, and then they will tell us what they want us to do.
Right.
Penfield and FEMA. And that's newer, you know, because when we got denied the appeal, then soon after, you know, it was like end of July, they sent a letter saying, and oh, by the way, that building is built in violation and we wanna talk to you about it.
Right.
So um, that's gonna take a while too. Um.
But I guess, I guess my point is, that's that's one of the reasons that the ARPA, it's such a we're we're not readily available for this just because of the potential timeframe this could take as you go through the negotiations and the the decision-making process for those two sites. Is that fair to say?
Correct. So the million that we did put in, we voted to approve, you know, we can use that for as we remediate
Right.
um, sites, and I intend to. And then, you know, we'll start going in to the six million, um. And listen, by the time, I I'm assuming just based on all these meetings and everything that I, you know, hear and learn, and the estimates, we're, you know, we'll go through the six million. And then we'll be probably need more, just even on remediation. And then we'll get to the discussion on um, Penfield.
Right.
Which will be a robust discussion, I'm sure.
Yeah, for consideration, given Nancy's comments regarding keeping us abreast, and I guess it is it is Mr. Bremer, right? Who's kinda the the point of the spear here on a day-to-day. Is that right?
Well, I'm, listen, he, yes, he's in the meetings, as is Chief of Staff, and we have an environmental attorney, and I'm updated regularly, and I will continue to update our uh,
Of course.
selectmen on items, you know, but, you know, again, you know, a lot of these meetings, they're long, and it's not like every meeting you come out with, oh, I've got an update. You know, it's just discussions and, you know, going back and forth and, you know, this and that. It's it's technical stuff. It's when I have real information um, that's tangible, is when I uh, give updates either through the newsletter, but I'm happy to provide those uh, to the Board of Selectmen as I get those.
I think I've got an, I've got a couple ideas that it's, you know, I I won't waste our time sitting at this table um, doing it right now, but I've got a couple ideas that might help in that communications uh, for our board to keep um, Nancy and I u- updated on some of these estimates and and some of the um, uh, some of the questions we get. So maybe we could take that offline and just uh, talk about it a little bit. Um, I can give some suggestions maybe to Mr. Bremer uh, about something that could be filled out um, on a you know, a a timely basis to keep us updated on the various sites and stuff. So if you don't mind, I might approach him with that.
And I would only say that if that's the case, because we're per- permitted, prohibited uh, Tom, from having these discussions, I would love to hear those ideas at the public table because I think that is a concern, that, you know, that we get asked questions and then just the the some of the hullabaloo that ensues online, and I know that's not anyone's fault. Um, but it would maybe offset some of that, so maybe we could have those discussions, Tom, with your suggestions publicly.
Yeah, I agree. No, I I I mean, I don't personally have a problem with that, and I would just, uh, again, I just don't wanna waste time going through kind of an administrative document uh, at the table. I just think I can sit down with Mr. Bremer and say, here's here's kinda what I'd like to see. Is this something that is easily put together for, that doesn't take a lot of time in the administration's port? And Nancy can talk with you, but and we can come back to the table and certainly talk with, you know, Madam First Select Woman.
So listen, I mean, you know, talk a little bit more about that, but again, um, you know, I I have stressed this um, repeatedly through uh, during pub- public meetings and through the newsletter, that, you know, unfortunately, this entire situation has uh, I'm gonna be honest, sucked the living life out of everybody in here, and we we are, you know, managing a town of over sixty thousand people with an extraordinary amount of challenges and issues. This makes up so much time and resource. So I don't know that, you know, Mr. Bremer actually would have filling out forms and such. What um,
It's one, it's one.
When I, when we have a substantive update, so for example, there could be, you know, five to ten in meetings with all of these, and and then there's something. Or when there's um, a site negotiated, so we have, say, maybe five or six sites that have finally been negotiated through the L E P, through the environmental agencies, and we come up, you know, they sign off, and then I provide an update in the newsletter. Here's, here's where we are. We're cleaning this, this and that. This is getting done, so on and so forth. But as far as um, I mean,
He, for your kids.
Dry than, you know, twenty three hours of meetings. It's not as if you could say, okay, we had a meeting and we talked about ten sites and, you know, we haven't come up with anything yet because we can't get anything signed off on yet.
So so just to
I just think that Brenda, for your, that exact reason, for as overtaxed as that, as your office is on this, I think that we can be a resource to possibly for some of that burden and subject matter expertise. So I think that the suggestion, maybe that specific one isn't the right one, but certainly there's a way to help with that burden.
Here's, yeah, and and let me, since we've gone
I understand all you're saying about that, but as far as information goes, I mean, to be perfectly honest, I mean,
Here, here's a thought.
It feels pretty informed, um, I think, um, on what's happening. And I haven't really gotten any feedback that people weren't. I know people were a little blindsided about Penfield. Um, uh, because that's newer. And I, I mean, people realize that there were issues there regarding FEMA. I don't think they probably understood to the extent. Um, but I, again, I pride myself on being very um, transparent with the newsletter. The newsletter is very transparent. And um, it and it provides all relevant data on a whole host of things, but most specifically about uh, remediation efforts, and will now um, include Penfield, although Penfield's not gonna have an update for some time cuz we're still, you know, trying to figure out which even items or options we're gonna pursue or present to the community during town meetings.
To to put this, there's two things here. Just to put this to to kind of a bow on it, and I was trying to, trying to stay away from from details, but we kinda have in the discussion anyway. What I was honestly thinking about was not a series of forms, okay? It was essentially a spreadsheet that says, and Brenda, you're right, there's so many moving parts. There's so many things that happen on a day-to-day basis. There's so much minutia that goes into this. There's so much negotiation that goes into it, and you're absolutely right. Everybody's overtaxed and it's taking us all the time. What I was honestly thinking was a spreadsheet that says, here's the fifty sites, right? Here's where they currently stand. Here's what the next steps are. Here's what the projected dollar value is based on best available information, right? And here's basically the timeframe. That's as simple as that. And you've got, you know, twenty of them that are done, right? You've got thirty of them that are not done, that are in separate states, right? And you have a little bit more detail on the fact that, you know, Penfield, to your point, gotta negotiate with FEMA, right? Or there's additional testing required, you know, fill pile, same thing. But basically just something, it's a tracker that's as simple as that. It's it's just, here's where it is. Here's the next steps. Here's the timeline. Here's a dollar amount. That's it. And then if we have, you know, a meeting every quarter or what have you, whatever the appropriate timeline is, to basically say, here's the latest update on this, this and this. That way, we just know at any given time, you know, the status of all the individual things, cuz you're right, there's too many damn moving pieces. There's too many places. Uh, and I think by having something as simple as a tracker like that, it would get a little, get rid of some of the static on the channel. I think that'd be helpful. That's what I
I think we do have some, I mean, we do have a fill pile site where we keep a lot of data. Um, I don't know that we would actually be able to give timelines on anything because, um, again, you don't know until it's signed off on.
And that's maybe where you put TBD.
So I, but we do put a lot on that fill pile site that I link to in my newsletter where people do go check it. Um, I could have double-checked to see that it's um, got everything updated on it, but that does have a lot of that information on it. Where we are, the Health Department uh, manages that. You know, they put all that information in, as, and they are included in these meetings as well. Um, these uh, environmental meetings with the L E Ps and the attorneys and
Right. Then I think, I I I think the only other thing I would add to this is it's kinda like dealing with the remediation and kinda dealing with the individual sites and in cleaning up the past transgressions. And then I think would be very helpful moving forward is look at what are the processes that were failed, that failed? Uh, and how do we ensure that doesn't happen again? Relative to, let's say, the FEMA, the the FEMA reimbursement, or the failure to avoid the the use of the contaminated fill under the pavilion in the parking lot. What what um, needs to be done to our internal processes that I know your group has already done, and I know you swapped out a lot of the people. Um, but but um, that'd be very interesting to have those discussions too at some point when things come out.
Obviously, we've done a lot, you know, of internal control. Um, to be honest with you though, Tom, I mean, you could have every internal control in place you want, but if you have someone who's not minding the store and you have people who are doing things corrupt, um,
Yeah.
you're not gonna follow those internal controls.
Right.
So, you know, um, and and I'm sorry, I I should have been more clear earlier. I apologize. We do have a spreadsheet online on the fill pile site. And it does have a status of all the sites.
Can Tom send that to me so I can take a look at it?
We'll have Jackie send you a link to it, um, or the Health Department. They're the ones that uh, put it up.
Yeah, I'd like to see that cuz I haven't seen that in a while then.
Sure. Sure.
And I'd like to see what it has on it. Thank you.
Thank you, and and I promise, you know, as, again, as we start to get, like, like I said, we're hoping to get close to some of this remedying a lot of these uh, or some sites this winter. You know, I'll keep everybody updated as we move forward when we get those sign-offs and we start working on them. Just like when we had Osborne, you know, we finally got the sign-off and, you know, the uh, Cool Manor and all these other things, so. I will definitely keep uh, everybody updated. So um, is there any other? I don't like, did we vote? I don't remember if they're talking.
Hey, that was the discussion. I think we still have to vote on the final.
Yeah, we do.
Alright, okay. Is there any other um, uh, discussion or questions?
No, I'm good on this. And congr- by the way, congratulations on the control of the expenses uh, to come in under the expense budget, given the challenging times that that's uh, that's quite good, and it's it's a nice surprise that we came in on the revenue better than we had anticipated, given best available information too.
Yes, thank you. Um, alright, if there's no further discussion on the side of uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nancy? Nancy?
I, sorry, aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Um our next item is to hear and consider and act upon any other business that shall properly become before this meeting.
I was curious, um, oh, sorry, did I cut you off?
No, no, go right ahead.
Curious if you could update us a little bit. Um I had emailed with Jen about this. I hope you got the message and if not, this week, maybe next, just the Burr Mansion and the noise, if you met with that community.
Yeah, I have. Thanks. I have a meeting scheduled with them, I believe, tomorrow. Um, let me look here. Um, yes, I'm meeting with the neighbors tomorrow. So, you know, there's a few things I think going on here and I did, I think I wrote back to one of the emails with everybody, I think you and um Tom were on. Um.
Yep.
So I know uh Mr. Geely um had had doubled up this past this year to make up for all the COVID cancellation events that happened uh last year. And typically, they only do one event um on a weekend, uh but they doubled up and we discussed, they had booked uh six weekends. They're doubling up for next year to catch up and then uh because he had asked and he had done that and I told him I don't want to do that anymore. And so we, I'm going to talk to the neighbors, because they did have some suggestions in those emails regarding, you know, the direction of speakers out there and several things that maybe could assist. I know that some um we we've had some new, a lot of new residents move into town from outside of um Connecticut during COVID. And obviously, last year during COVID, Burr was silent because there was no events. And so I, it might be surprising to some people, but again, there's, there was a doubling up. So we're going to meet tomorrow and also, you know, the leases, we're uh Attorney Baldwin uh and I have been going over a number of leases, you know, so a lot of these leases are coming up and coming due. And we're going to be reviewing them in the uh coming months to look at them. So I know the noise ordinance thing has come up in the past, not just at this site, but um throughout the town, people have talked about noise ordinances. Um and I know that's an RTM function. They pass ordinances. So I don't know if they're supposed to be. I think some members of the RTM have been looking at noise ordinance uh language potentially um that they'll be working on in the coming year. But um as far as this site goes, I I'll um, I'm going to listen to the neighbors tomorrow and see what we can come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Is there any other items uh anyone would like to bring up?
I'm good.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I don't have any uh anything else. And so um uh I.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, very good. Tom, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone. Uh have a good evening.
You as well.
All right. Take care.
Bye.
Bye.